Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the executive minutes of March 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. All right, a motion for the regular minutes of March 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome all, and this seems just like our last meeting was talking about when will the snow go away, and now we've, now this is a sports jacket optional night here for the council meeting because it is a little warm, so Pat has already taken the lead, but if you see some of us take off our jackets, it is a little warm here as we're shifting This past Saturday, we had our first ever Latino community town hall meeting, I want to thank all the staff that put in so many hours and came out on a Saturday morning on their time to attend that meeting. It was very helpful, and I think will be a springboard for ways to reach out to the community in new ways. The Employee of the Month for April is Sarah Rafter of the Water and Light, Water and Electric Billing Department for the work she performed on large detailed meter project requested by the Water Department and for courteous and pleasant customer service and assistance to borough residents. And this coming Monday, a week from today, at Drew University, Drew has teamed up to do the tree seedlings program, and so on Monday, the 20th, as part of New Jersey Tree Recovery Campaign from 12 to 2:00 p.m. and from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., residents can pick up tree seedlings at Drew University's Simon Foreman Athletic Center. So take, take advantage of getting a seedling and planting in your yard so we can get our trees restored. And there is no one here to accept this proclamation, but I do want to read through it because it is very important. Child abuse prevention awareness month for April. Whereas a maltreatment abuse of neglected children is significant social problem that damages children physically, mentally, and emotionally, and inflicts immeasurable harm on the society as a whole, and all children deserve to be nurtured, protected, and free from physical or emotional harm. And the state of New Jersey, New Jersey Department of Children and families, families believe that the best place to raise children is among strong, healthy families, and the state of New Jersey is committed to building a continuum of community-based child abuse prevention and intervention programs that are culturally competent, strength-based, family-centered, and achieve positive outcomes for parenting and family relations, as well as empower domestic violence victims and their children. And the New Jersey Department of Children and Families embrace standards for prevention for prevention programs developed by New Jersey Task Force on Child Abuse Neglect, and all sectors of community, including law enforcement, medical professionals, schools, courts, and media outlets, as well as numerous public and private agencies have joined forces to promote public awareness on community involvement in strengthening families during the month of April and continuing throughout the year. So now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim April 15th, April 2015, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and urge our residents to become involved in efforts aimed at strengthening families, communities, and preventing our children from being abused and neglected. So we will send that off to show our support for that program. First thing I want to do for our presentations is actually ask Liz to step down from the dais and away from her controls here. Today is April 13th, a very lucky day, and it's Liz's birthday. So. How about if we all rise, and I will not lead the singing, but sing a little Happy Birthday for Liz.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Liz, happy birthday to you.
And rest assured, I don't think we'll be performing on The Voice anytime soon.
No.
So thank you for joining on that. Santi Arango, please come up and join me, and coaches, coach, come on up. As we so often do, we like to honor exceptional performance, and for Madison, almost seems like every meeting we're recognizing some exceptional performance. And right here, 220 weight class is Santi Arango, and I will read through his season here, not the whole season, but why we're recognizing, because it is truly successful, and you have represented Madison very well. So, so here we have, the mayor and council hereby congratulate Santi Arango for achievement in winning the NJ SIAA District 10 Wrestling Championship, and for being named first team Northwest New Jersey Athletic Conference Liberty Division. These accomplishments require extraordinary effort, dedication, and perseverance. We commend Santi for his commitment in reaching these goals, and recognize Coach Michael Goodwin for his leadership in training and coaching. The achievement of this outstanding athlete has brought great pride to the Borough of Madison, and in testimony of our appreciation, I here unto set the official seat of the Borough of Madison. Santi, congratulations.
Santi is just another great student and a student athlete that Madison has produced, and luckily, we have another year of him. Thank you.
We'll mark the calendar next year at this time. Reports from committees, committee affairs, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. We are calling all volunteers, May Day in Madison, 2015 is set for Saturday, May 2nd. We ask, grab your friends, your family, your coworkers, and sign up for this great community beautification event, and you get to wear a May Day t-shirt. And sign up by emailing lisa ellis at ddc@rosenet.org. And then for the Recreation Department, on Thursday, April 23rd, the Borough of Madison and the Madison Little League will host the first Madison Avenue Challenge, featuring the baseball teams from Drew University and Fairleigh Dickinson University. The game starts at 7:00 p.m. at Dodge Field, and all are invited to join in on a very fun evening. I also want to remind people that the Little League Parade is Saturday, April 18th, and the Madison Chamber of Commerce is planning spring sale days for that day, Saturday, April 18th. They also have their Home Expo scheduled for Saturday, April 25th, at the Madison Community House. I've mentioned before, that's when landscapers and home improvement companies will be able, will be on hand to give you advice. And tonight, we are approving a resolution, I hope so, to locate the 2015 Farmer's Market on Central Avenue between Main and Cook from June 4th through October 15th, with market hours of 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The reasons for this, we're going to have better parking, better accessibility for seniors, better safety, better visibility for vendors, and more space for vendors.
Sorry.
And, let's see, finally, Drew University, well, actually, no, finally, I've got two more. Drew University annually presents Civic Engagement Awards. This will be held next Tuesday, April 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Student Center. This year, our very own Mayor Connolly and Assistant Borough Administrator Jim Burnett are being honored. This year, the award celebrates the collaborative work Drew students have been doing with the Borough of Madison. And from 4:00 to 4:30 on that day, Drew students and faculty will showcase their civic projects. The award ceremony begins at 4:30. So congratulations to Mayor Connolly and Jim Burnett, and the Drew students for their interest and involvement with the town. And finally, with the seniors, the seniors, 120 seniors took advantage of the invitation to the Madison High School's annual dinner and dress rehearsal performance of Les Miserables on March 25th. The show got excellent reviews from all who attended. And Nancy Hess and Jim Hackett met with the telephone reassurance volunteers on April 7th to review their plans for streamlining client reports for faster access to resources. They are also planning to publicize the program to corporate employees to encourage them to volunteer and take advantage of the program if they have elderly, isolated relatives or neighbors. Madison Cub Scouts will be visiting the Civic Center after school on Wednesday, April 15th, to clean up the parking lot as part of a community service project. And the Friends of the Madison Senior Center are hosting their annual spring luncheon on Wednesday, April 22nd, to honor the 11 AARP Tax Aid and Senior Health Insurance Program volunteers for their assistance with the preparation and filing of federal and state income taxes and Medicare and medical insurance issues. Roman Ellis will be catering the event. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Due to the tragic recent deaths attributable to carbon monoxide poisoning, seven children and one adult in Maryland, a mother and daughter in East Orange, New Jersey, and four elderly adults in Queens, New York. The Madison Fire Department would like to remind all of our residents to be sure they have working carbon monoxide detectors in their homes and apartments. Please refer to the Fire Department's website to review a fact sheet, or to the National Fire Protection Agency, NFPA, website, http://www.nfpa.org. These deaths were all attributed to carbon monoxide being produced by gasoline-powered generators and exhaust from a car running inside a garage. Some statistics, during the first three months of 2015, the Madison Fire Department has responded to 357 incidents. They are broken down as follows: 111 dispatched calls, 109 investigations, and 137 EMS calls. As it pertains to the police, excuse me while I switch screens here, the wrong screen.
Here, I can give you a paper copy.
Now, I want to, you know, save a tree, after all, we're environmentalists, aren't we?
Yes.
Here it is, right here, sorry.
Thank you.
The Madison Police Department responded to 3,580 calls for service during the month of March. Officers responded to an investigated 46 motor vehicle crashes, conducted 395 motor vehicle stops, issued 253 summonses, and made 17 arrests, and conducted 136 radar posts. Madison officers handled 90 alarm activations and conducted over 1,100 premises checks, including daytime school checks, business checks, housing checks, et cetera. During the month of March, officers investigated 11 suspicious incidences, 27 suspicious motor vehicles, and 22 suspicious persons. Madison officers also investigated four acts of domestic violence, four thefts, and three harassment complaints. Officers also investigated three local ordinance violations, three juvenile complaints, three burglaries, two simple assaults, two intoxicated persons, and two identity thefts, one of which was Brenda Catalonello, by the way.
Oh my gosh.
So it happens here, it happens to everyone. During the month, we conducted significant amounts of training, monthly regional ESU training, we identified concealed drug compartments, supervision and mentoring, critical incident briefing, juvenile internet security and cyber bullying, crime prevention officer training, CPR recertification for the entire department, Medical Marijuana Act patrol, you know, pretty much, that's all I have, nothing else of operation. Oh, sorry, one more thing. Patrolman Boone injured on duty, required knee operation, distract, we are conducting a distracted driving campaign, and a couple car thefts. Nothing else other than that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Report from the Electric Department. They installed temporary cable to feed post lights at the railroad station due to faulty underground conduits and cable. Began installation of transformer bank at 39 Green Village Road, which is coming along very well up there. Installed stub pole on Ridgedale Avenue, replaced pole on Longview Avenue, and they continue to do line clearance in various locations, service upgrades and removals, and mark out requests. From the Patriotic Celebration Committee, just a reminder that Memorial Day Parade will be May 25th, and it's coming up quickly. Ceremonies always begin at 9:00 at James Park, so, you know, you're all invited, please to come there. It's a wonderful ceremony. We come down to Condorsa Way and then begin parade. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Mayor Ryan will come during the budget hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Health, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Health Department's currently working on objectives for their emergency response goals for their strategic plan, and may be reaching out to other partners in emergency management to augment or support their goals. If you're one of the people in contact, by all means, please help them out. On another subject, women who are due for a gynecological checkup are invited to sign up for an appointment with the Madison Health Department. These checkups are open to all women over age 18 who live in Madison, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, or Springfield, the towns that we serve through shared service arrangements. You do not need health insurance to have a checkup. Screening will be held at the Madison Health Department, located in the Civic Center at 28 Walnut Street, on Wednesday, May 6th, beginning at 9:30 a.m. Appointments are necessary and can be made by calling (973) 593-3079, extension 1. There may be a fee of $25, depending on what tests are indicated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Pat Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First from Public Works, the staff has completed its initial work on getting the playing fields ready for the spring season, and they are continuing to focus their attention on Madison's numerous potholes. From the Engineering Department, first this week, the Ridgedale Avenue project is being advertised. The bid opening is scheduled for Thursday, May 14th, at 10:00 a.m. The Waverly parking lot plans will also be advertised next week. We expect to be able to both, complete both projects this summer. Quotes have been assembled for the six milliner overlay projects identified in the 2015 capital budget. They include Morris Place, Danforth Road, Sherwood Ave, Longwood Ave, Candlewood, and Fox Chase Road. The award of a contracted Tilkam paving and Denville striping will allow these projects to proceed before the end of this May. Several week, survey work continues for next year's road projects. Residents may notice surveyors on Lewanica Terrace, Crescent Ave, Kenny Street, West Street, Cross Street, and Cottage Place. In the parks, contractor and material vendor requests for quotes have been sent for the drainage and turf replacement work on the Memorial Field Sports Field and skating rink. An update of the Memorial Park Wetland Letter of Interpretation is being assembled by Eco Science Inc., environmental specialists, for submission later this summer. A cooperative pre-bid purchasing network, KPN, has been identified for sports lighting equipment. This purchasing network is advantageous for us for several projects being contemplated by the borough, including replacement of lighting fixtures at Dodge Field basketball courts, and second, the eventual replacement of lighting on the sports field with more economical LED lighting. And last, we are working with the Madison Junior Football and lacrosse clubs, we're donating a scoreboard for the Madison Rec Complex. We'll be coordinating the infrastructure connections and the installation of the electric and public work, by the Electric and Public Works Departments. And finally, for Hartley Dodge, the application to the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund was delivered to the county this week prior to their deadline of the end of the month. A second letter of intent has been submitted to the State of New Jersey's 2016 Historic Preservation Fund, anticipating that Madison may be able to receive some funding for the project from the state's funds. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We now move on to our budget hearing, and this is opportunity for the public to ask questions or make comments on the proposed municipal budget as was introduced. As the hearing gets open, please, if you want to make a comment or ask questions, please step up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Related to questions, we'll keep track of the questions and have our auditing team or council answer those questions as we get into discussion. So anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Tom is pending your 20 rolling hill court. The comments that I am going to make are on behalf of the Strategic Planning Borough Budget Committee. We would like to compliment the council and the administration on the process used in this year's budget. The budget guidelines included in our draft report have been used to evaluate the 2015 budget. The alternative budget format that we proposed has also been included in the package for the public. Hopefully, the citizens of Madison will become accustomed to seeing these used in the future years. They will assist all in achieving the mission that we proposed for the budget, that the borough's annual municipal budget shall be established to provide and support the services desired by the residents. The principles employed in the formulation shall include financial prudence, consistency, stability, and predictability. The realities of inflation and compliance with New Jersey legal requirements must be considered. This year's budget, we believe, achieves the first of these principles, and hopefully, the future budget will only tell if the consistency, stability, and predictability will be achieved. As we said in our presentation of our draft report, the annual budget is only one step in achieving long-term plans for the borough. The Budget Committee will be finalizing its report in the next week or so, and will present it to the council at your next meeting. We encourage you to consider adopting the guidelines in a formal manner to ensure that they be used in the future. The metrics included, we believe, provide flexibility to provide future councils and ability to frame budgets while reflecting a consistency in the measurement in their budgets to achieve that mission. With that, we would certainly be glad to answer any questions, and hopefully, we'll see you at the next meeting as we present our formal report.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And thank you for all the work, and all the committee members' work. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. And can have the clerk read the resolution by title?
This will be Resolution 108, 2015, to the Resolution of the Borough of Madison Adopting the 2015 Budget and Tax Resolution.
Mayor, I move Resolution R. 108-2015, and I second it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Finance Chair, lead off.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. When this budget was introduced, I had a statement, and what you can hear tonight is a lot of what I said before, I'll paraphrase, and I don't want to go on too long, but I've added a few things. To start off with, the budget that we're going to hopefully pass tonight is one that the Borough of Madison should be proud of. It's a well-thought-out and honest budget. It's one that's sustainable and delivers what it says it can deliver. It's the result of hours of work by Ray Cody, Jim Burnett, Robert Califford, the department heads, a number of whom I see sitting here tonight, and the strategic planning committees. They worked their tails off on this, and it shows. I want to give special thanks to two people. First, Ben Wolkowitz, sitting next to me, he chaired this committee the two prior years, and really got it going the way it should, and I want to thank him, he was a fountain of knowledge. And secondly, I want to thank Robert Califford. You know, he sits quietly at the meetings, but he's a very honorable and trustworthy man. He works hard. When you ask him for something, you get it. This borough owes him a great deal, and a debt of gratitude. I know he's retiring. It's been my honor to work with you this year, Robert, and thank you very much for all you've done. In regards to the strategic planning committees, their work was invaluable. I mean, when you sit back and think about it, they were working on their recommendations as we were doing the budget, and we adopted quite a few of them. They were heard, and we will, we did this year, and we hope to continue to work toward meeting all their guidelines in the years to come. When I talked last time, I said that, you know, it's not just us in the room that formed this budget, it's feedback from the residents. And sitting up here, we're public servants, and we're here to listen to the residents, and we're duty-bound to listen to them. And when I was campaigning last year, there was a common thread. Everybody wanted their property taxes lowered or kept in check, their roads and sidewalks fixed, infrastructure maintained, services maintained, and electric rates lowered. Well, it's not realistic to think you can get everything, I mean, it just doesn't happen that way, but we have a route in place, a framework in place to get there. Specifically, it's calling for a 1.5% increase in real estate taxes. Now, the last time when I spoke, I said, we were duty-bound to keep our piece as low as possible because we didn't know what was going to come from the school, you know, because we have to do it all together, and it compounds every year. Well, this year, the school raised their piece by 4%. Now, I know they're having a public session, I believe it's next Monday, and I encourage our residents to go and listen to the reasons why it would have 4%, but I feel good that we were able to keep at least our piece in check. We maintained all the borough services. We're investing over $3 million in our capital program. We continue to realize the importance of public safety, and we're adding police and firemen. We're investing in new equipment, you know, our department has cited the need for it, we recognize it, and we're doing it. And we've again funded the targeted electric rebate program, which for a number of our residents who qualified, they're going to save 10.8, 10.89% on their electric bills. We're no longer funding capital improvements with non-recurring revenue like property sales and borrow funds. The $3 million this year comes from general capital and from other budgeted items, no more one-time hits. We're now catching up on deferred capital funding, and we're also in a good position to deal with unforeseen circumstances. God forbid we have another Hurricane Sandy. Unlike a lot of towns which had to go out to bond to pay for it, we didn't, we had the money. We've met the criteria set by the state for well-run communities, which allows us to self-examine ourselves, and we have our auditors here, and I know they spoke last time, and I think they, I'm assuming you may want to say something tonight. Now, is there work to be done? Yeah, there is. Like Mr. Bittenger said, we've met some of the goals, but we have more work to do, and we're going to meet them. And just a few closing comments. The annual budget should provide and support the services desired by the residents and what is affordable. That is what was in their guidelines, and it does. $3 million plus of capital improvement funds should be used as a placeholder. We have done that. The budget needs to be firm but flexible. They are. Is the budget sustainable? It absolutely is. And, you know, we've heard a lot of talk about the AAA rating. Well, in New Jersey, there are 565 towns. Now, Standard and Poor's comes in annually to take a look at them and, you know, rate us. We're one of, only of 19 towns in this state that have a AAA rating. That's something to be proud of. We're in the top, well, if you do the math, it's less than what, like, .03% of the towns get that rating. We have it. So in closing, I'd like to say this, when this budget, which, and I've heard a lot of people say this, many towns would die to have, was introduced, it was done unanimously. I'm hoping tonight that this budget can be passed unanimously. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Pat?
All right, got to switch to stronger glasses. First, actually, I'd like to thank Robert. It's been a lot of fun working with you, and I hope you the best in your retirement. I also want to thank the strategic planning committees. I think a lot of the information I looked at this year when I weighed this budget was based on the information that they gave back to us and the guidelines that they gave us, so that, that work was invaluable. So then in addition to that, I'd like to thank the borough administration and the finance committee for all the hours of work and the luminous data we received again this year. Because of the two utilities that we own and operate, our budgets have a multitude of accounts, services, and projects that all require a great deal of attention, and having that data helps drive better analysis and better decisions by the council. Last year, I advocated for a budget that had several things. First, an operating budget that grew at or less than the 2% cap, minimal increases in. in the transfer from the utilities to supporting the operating budget, and a cut in the electric rate. In the end, I did not feel that the budget presented was close to any of these principles, and I voted no. This year, thanks to the recommendations from the strategic planning committees, which endorsed, amongst other things, the concept of reducing the borough's over-reliance on the utilities as a funding source, budgeted transfer, budget support by the transfers on the utilities for the operating portion of the budget have been reduced, and more of the money has been directed at the borough's capital needs. The operating budget, excluding one-time funding of a reserve for tax appeals last year, is up a modest 1.6%, but we still have seen an increase of over 6% for the past two years. This is something I still don't think that we can sustain. We also need to address the three carriers where the current budget is out of favor with the guidelines received from the strategic planning committees for budgets, and a few noted by the capital and utility committees, none of which seem to improve dramatically in the two-year forecast that was presented to council. The first is our continued over-reliance on the utility support our total appropriations. 20% was a recommended maximum, but we are well over that, and next year expect to go even further away from that goal. This also drives our variance with the second goal that we are missing, a minimum of 50% of the total appropriations coming from property taxes. Third, we've also grown the surplus to the point where our year-end total exceeds the recommended percentage of the current year's appropriation. Additionally, I was told by Robert last week that we will not have to issue estimated tax bills this year because we now have sufficient free cash to not only fund our own operations for most of the third quarter, but also send the county and the board of ed the taxes we collect on their behalf for this quarter. Although it's great that the taxpayers won't have to receive two sets of tax bills this year, it also means we've reached a point where we need to stop growing the total surplus that we retain. The other areas we need to address is our capital spend. We are not meeting the targets set by the capital budget or utilities committees, and we're also not apportioning the money in the percentages that they said we needed, especially the ones considered most critical, which are water, electric, and sanitary sewer. It's great that we have a set of guidelines that we can measure ourselves against, but we need to do more to make these policy when preparing our budgets for 2016 and beyond. We also need to work to bring the large variance in the capital utility spending targets down to one number we can all agree on. For example, this year, we have an electric utility report that says as little as $410,000, but as much as 100, 1.6 million needs to be budgeted and spent on capital. Our own budget allocates $400,000, but our capital plan only anticipates using $185,000 of this year and an average of $280,000 for the next five years. This is something I think we really need to get our arms around and agree on what we're going to do going forward on that. Once we work this out, we also need to double back and look at the growing surplus that the electric utility is generating. Our estimated cost of wholesale electricity in 2017 is over $6 million less than it was the previous, under the previous contract. So, if we're not dedicating more money to capital projects, there must be room to provide an electric rate cut to residents at a minimum. So, we still have a ways to go before the budget is a place that I feel is completely reasonable and sustainable, but I believe we are making progress, and we have a roadmap that we all seem to agree with. Finally, I believe we do need to continue the work of the strategic planning committees to assist us with bringing future budgets in line with guidelines they have set out, and also to true up some of the wide variances we're seeing in the capital spend required to maintain all our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob?
Did someone else want to go?
You were...
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
You called in. First-time caller, long-time listener, you called in first.
So, this is my fifth year on council. The first year, when Mariana was mayor, I voted against her budget because it didn't, I felt it didn't, it didn't address their capital needs adequately. Following year, I voted against the budget for, I didn't think we did enough on the operating side. Last two years, I voted against the budget for a variety of reasons, borrowing, different taxes. I think, I think I'm at the position here in year five where I'm going to vote for this budget. I have several concerns as well going forward. Most notably, you know, if I look at the increase in operating spending over the past two years, we're up 6.2%, and yet our revenue has increased only 1.5% from increased municipal It's not hard, for those of you who've been paying attention, to realize, you know, we're still supplementing a lot of our spending with proceeds from the utilities. That's great. What concerns me is not this year, not next year, not the year after, but going forward, you know, as good a job as the borough does in hedging its electric costs, buying at low rates that enable us to have these massive surpluses, we have no control over the ultimate price of electricity. Our hedging program will, gives us excellent predictability into what we will be paying for electricity going forward, and hence, if we were to assume, you know, no change in electric rates, what our surplus will be. But it cannot guarantee that we will be able to buy at these levels indefinitely. It will help dampen the amplitude of the spikes. That will surely happen. I've been doing this for 25 years. I've made a career of advising corporations on FX and commodity hedging, and, you know, they're mean reverting. Prices will go up eventually. And my concern is that going forward, the over-reliance on this surplus, when it goes away, will cause us to make drastic, in some cases draconian cuts like we had to do in 2010, 2011. I would like to see us this year begin to look at other ways to generate revenue and to really have the hard discussion that elected officials always say they're willing to have about, you know, what it is we can afford and how we are going to pay for them. Having said that, I would like to thank everyone who was involved with this budget. I think that a tremendous amount of work went into it. I think that the strategic planning committees did a wonderful job. I would love to see us, you know, get more in line with what it is they are asking us to do, and I fully support doing so by passing an ordinance to help us make sure that we stick to their, to their guidelines. That's something I think we should, we should certainly do this year. As it pertains to this budget, though, you know, I think it's as, as good as we could have done. You know, we probably should have reduced the surplus, the year-end surplus, a bit and increased capital. Let's, you know, let's not forget that Bruce's team said we should spend $4 million a year on capital. We spent 3.5% last year, a lot of it from one time. This year, we're at $3 million. We're kind of going the wrong direction, but we're over on the surplus. I would have liked to have seen more of that spent on, 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 on capital. But you know what? I think this is a good place to start, but we cannot become overly restive as it pertains to the amount of money that will be available. These are historic lows. When it comes to the cost of natural gas, which is, which is the main proponent or, or, or the main fuel used to produce electricity, hence lower electric prices, that will not last forever. And my concern is not for the next budget cycle or two, but for the long-term fiscal strength of the borough. And that's it. So, thank you very much, everyone, for, for working on this, and I look forward to making interesting changes in the future.
Thank you. We'll stand this side. Astri?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. This really excites me. Thank you.
That's what I'm here for, Astri.
At the last meeting, we unanimously approved the introduction of the budget. So, and we've continued to provide the services our residents want. We funded the capital to continue maintenance of our roads and infrastructure. We've hired the additional police officers and to, at the next meeting, a firefighter to maintain our high quality of safety services. So, all this with a minimal increase in the municipal tax. Our open space recreation and historic preservation tax, which the voters unanimously supported, I have the pen for that. We supported it November 4th, 2003. We overwhelmingly supported it.
Not unanimously, but...
Oh, unanimously, okay. But the residents did, supported it. And that now that we are, we're using that tax, we're paying down the debt of the MRC acquisition and the TRF, but it's now able to fund historic preservation projects like the James Library Building, a cornerstone of our historic downtown, and the renovation of the east wing of Hartley Dodge Memorial. The trust fund money is leveraging county dollars to do that. And we've also recently approved to repair and improve the skating rink, which also services as a field for over 340 children. So, I want to thank the strategic planning committee members who put together a very helpful set of guidelines for the budget. And although the timing was a bit off in the sense that we really couldn't give it the in-depth analysis that we wanted, we did use a lot of their guidelines, and I look forward to the council discussion on these guidelines in 2016. And I, you know, our AAA rating is being maintained. Madison remains a very stable financial community. So, I wholeheartedly support this budget, and I thank every single person who contributed to making this budget so successful for us. Thank you.
Well, we'll finish off on the right side and move back over. So...
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be very simple, and my comments are very simple about this budget. It's not, it's not an easy thing to be a resident and be an elected official because there's a lot to think, to think about. So, you have to put your personnel, your personal stuff aside, and you have to say, okay, what's the best thing that's going to happen for Madison? I think one of the greatest things that we had this year is that we had the opportunity to meet a group of people from each one of the strategic planning committees that came out and volunteered and did a tremendous job. And what was absolutely great is, I can't speak for everybody else, but you guys made me think, you know? And that's good because sometimes you, you think that something is just the way it should be, but you gave us opportunity to think about looking in different directions. So, you know, I want to thank you, everybody, you know, including the communication strategic planning, which I see Maureen and John Hoover here, because that gave us an opportunity for them to say, hey, listen, we're, we're very, very transparent about what our thoughts are. Of course, I've known Robert for a very long time. He's a good guy, very simply. He really just is, and he's put up with every single one of us and changing every three years and whatever. So, you know, thanks for all, all your hard work. And of course, Ray and Jim, I don't know what any of us would do without them. They, they've just been absolutely great. I want to thank my fellow council members, too, because one of the things that happens is, is that we discuss, and we don't agree absolutely on many things, but that's good because it gives us an opportunity to say, hey, listen, how could we do things differently? I listened to Rob talk about, tonight about finding revenues. I, I'd love to work with you, try and find extra revenues, you know, and to come up with different concepts. So, there really is a lot for us to do, but I'm proud of this. I'm proud of this budget. I'm proud to present it to the, the people of Madison, to say to them, hey, listen, you know what? We're not touching one of your services. We're still going to be the great town that we are, and we're adding to those services, and we're making it better. So, you know, my support is just absolutely A1, you know? Thank you, Bob. Thank you all, and Ben, for helping out so much with this. But I'm very proud of this budget, and I'm proud to present it to each and every one of you as members of, of this town and residents of this town.
Thank you. And Ben?
Okay. I have the usual difficulty of being the last man, which is most of the things I were going to say have been said. However, I still want to say some of them, even if it's just from me, again. And I also want to point out a few things. I don't know if Tom Bittenger feels the way I do, but we're, we're getting to be victims of our own success here. The strategic plan that was distributed regarding the budget was marked draft, and as Tom said, we're still working on it. So, the numbers will be a little different, and I have to say, I view all of these plans as, I hopefully, evergreen, and to be that, they're going to have to change over time. So, I'm, I, I think the guidelines are terrific. I worked as a member of that committee. It was the only committee I, I actually was a member of. But I want to caution that, you don't want to get too far ahead of us, if you can help that, right? We still have a lot to do. We know we have a lot to do. We have a lot to do on capital. We have, as you heard, a number of unresolved issues regarding utilities that have to be ironed out. So, we have a, a very significant agenda as well. It's my expectation we'll be adding some additional subjects for the work of strategic planning committees in the future. Excuse me. And I hope to be able to give that some more thought and talk to this group about it and then bring it out to the public. I, too, would like to say thank you very much to the staff, to, certainly to Ray and to Jim, but we've got to give a special shout at, as it were, to Robert Califford. This will be the 25th year that he submits the Madison budget on our behalf to the state. So, thank you. The, one thing that we haven't talked about and I would like to mention is this whole issue of transparency. One thing I'm particularly proud of as a member of this council is what we've done to make this whole effort a good deal more transparent. I was going to tell you about the budget summary that's in the entrance to our building, but I noticed it's behind me. I assume it'll be back in the entrance, and a much smaller version of it will be in your mail in the not-too-distant future, along with your utility bills. We want everyone to understand the budget, and we're also, at the same time, reviewing other versions of it, including the one that the strategic planning committee on the budget formulated, and will be distributing those as well. If there was one thing proven by the strategic planning effort, it's that volunteers and talent is abundant in Madison. What we need to do is to make more and better use of it, and the only way we're going to do that is to share increasingly more information. In addition to everything I just said, the operations strategic planning committee will be meeting starting tomorrow night and reviewing new websites to replace RoseNet. We're looking to have a much more user-friendly interface. You'll be able to get all this material online. You'll be able to interact with us more easily. I can't tell you how soon it will take. This, this process is often quite difficult, but we're making that effort, and I think we'll all benefit for it. As with any budget, I, you know, even though I was a little more involved with this one, there are things I would have done differently. There were things I think we got perfectly fine, and there were other things where I was the lone voice, I guess, in the discussion, but it happens. Having said that, though, I want to say that I'm very enthusiastic about voting yes for this budget. I believe it's consistent with the ones we've had in the last couple of years. I'm proud that we have a AAA rating. We did our refinancing. It was like a sale at Kmart when we sold $15 million worth of bonds. They were oversubscribed, and it's no small testimony to the fact that we have a AAA rating. So, with that, I'd just like to say thank you again to everyone who's worked on this. Thank you very much to everyone in the strategic planning committees, and indeed, if we sparked your interest, please let us know. We're going to have more efforts underway with other topics, and as always, we'll need volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, we have our auditing team from Nissachia, Valerie Dolan, and David Evans. Valerie, you want to come up and...
First, let me introduce myself and Valerie Dolan and partners with Dave Evans at Nissachia. We're the borough auditors. Sorry about that last time. As a result of sound fiscal management of the borough, not only you're not subject to state review of this budget this year, that means at the conclusion of your hearing, when you close your hearing, you can vote and adopt the budget tonight. As I had indicated, I just want to give a couple of highlights of things I had indicated at the introduction. This is, the budget is a good indicator of how the borough is run. It's a well-run town, and the budget is indicative of it. The borough administration has put together a wonderful, financially prudent document, as you all have said and reiterated throughout all of your comments. You are millions below your, not only your tax levy cap and your appropriation cap. That is to be commended. There's no reason that we see that 2016's budget can't be built under the same guidelines. You should be able to budget for 2016, and all of this has continued to be done without any services being adjusted to the Borough of Madison. All of your services are being held intact, which is to be... All of your services are being held intact, which is to be.
Thank you. Before the vote, I'll just, very quick comments. Talk about irony as I'm sitting here, I get a Nixal alert from the fire department saying, or from the police department saying fireworks to begin momentarily. And I, I, I think in, as Bob mentioned, there's over 500 municipalities in New Jersey and many of those municipalities will, will have fireworks for their budget. Thankfully, not, not here. The comments from our council members talking about the support from our staff and the committees are all spot on, not only talking about the pluses in this budget, but also the work to be done and talking about the, setting a roadmap for more work to be done as the committee comes back and we start working on other sources of revenues. And we'll work on it as a team. So I want to thank everyone for all their work. And again, we'll probably be hearing this theme throughout the year, but Robert Califford, thank you so much for all your leadership for many of the years and congratulations on your 25th budget. 27th budget. And, and in five minutes and on to your 27th budget, I have arranged for fireworks to go off in Chinatown Township. So we'll get this vote and you can run out and watch it. With that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you all. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you, Dave. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to items on our agenda discussions under 13 and also items that are under the consent agenda resolutions. So on our agenda discussions, we have a update on COA, that's the Council on Affordable Housing. We have ordinance prohibiting unregulated pipelines in all zoning districts and an amendment to the sidewalk replacement permit fees. And you may comment on any resolutions, as I mentioned. If you wish to comment any of those items, please step to lectern, state your name, your address, and the agenda item you're commenting on, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing, excuse me, seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we move on to agenda discussions. And the first one is, as I mentioned, on COA update. We'll call up our law term team, Jim Bruno, Greg Castano.
And Lou.
And then we also have Lou Ricchio from our executive director, housing authority will be also coming up.
Thank you, Jim Bruno with the firm of Castano Quigley. As was mentioned, you know, there are over 500 municipalities in the, in the state and, and with affordable housing. You know, there are different levels of how different towns have dealt with their obligations. This goes back 40 years and for the benefit of those who may not know or for the public, we talk about affordable housing, it all started with Mount Laurel litigation down in Mount Laurel, New Jersey, Supreme Court cases, the first of which just said every developing municipality had an obligation to provide a realistic opportunity for affordable housing. The second case took it a little further and imposed, created Mount Laurel courts throughout the state and said if towns were not meeting their obligation, then builders remedies, builders could sue to force towns to build affordable housing in areas that may not have been zoned for that. And that's where we were until about 1985, when the legislature decided to step in and adopt the Fair Housing Act and created a Council on Affordable Housing. That, that process now has been going on for 30 years. It was 1985. There's been a series of rules that have been adopted, litigated, re-adopted, changed. And at every step of the way, Madison has done a very good job in trying to comply with those rules. And because of that, we achieved a certain status in compliance. But because of the failure of the Council on Affordable Housing to adopt rules within the timeframe set, the courts have now taken away from the Council of Affordable Housing that protection that they could grant to municipalities. And we're back to the position where towns could be faced with builder remedy suits or other judicial remedies while dealing with their affordable housing. Now, as I said, it depends on where you are in the spectrum of the 565 municipalities. 60 had made it all the way through the COA process, received certification, they get one benefit, and they pretty much have a presumptive validity to their zoning ordinances. Then you have 200 municipalities who did nothing and they could be sued for builder's remedy right away. And then we have the 300 in the middle, Madison being one, that's deemed a participating municipality. And with the participating municipalities, the way the court structure works, this last Supreme Court decision created, you know, for 90 days after the decision, which will start on January, sorry, June 8th, municipalities can petition the courts to declare that they have been in compliance with a constitutional obligation. There's a 30-day period for doing that. The municipalities don't, do not have to do that. You not, do not have to petition the courts. Our initial view of it is maybe we ought to just see how this develops before we go forward. But if we do nothing, it still doesn't mean they're going to be subject to a builder's remedy. It would mean that if someone wanted to bring an action against the town, we'd have to prove that we're proceeding diligently with our obligations. Now, again, because of all the COA rules, you know, COA was trying to define what every municipality's obligation was and how they could meet it. Those rules are again in limbo, so we're dealing with an uncertain landscape as how we define our obligation. On COA rules as they existed, had us at 88 units, I believe, of affordable housing required. We had received credit because in prior rounds, we had actually exceeded our obligation. The Fair Share Housing Center, which instituted a suit and, and is heavily involved in the litigation, did their own analysis and they project Madison's need at 435 units. Significant number. So if there were litigation after this period were to expire, we're going to have to be in a position of showing what we're doing, why we think that number is not, you know, 435, what we think that number is and what we're doing as, as a municipality to try to advance our efforts in affordable housing. Now again, the good news is when you look at the court's decision, they do recognize, you know, of all those participating municipalities, of the 300, you know, there's different levels. There are people who just said, yes, I'll be subject to COA but never did anything. Madison presented a housing element to the state. It's never been approved because the rules kept changing. But we did present a plan to the state for meeting our affordable housing needs. We've done other things since then. I mean, we've, council has adopted an ordinance of requiring new developments, tenants and more to have at least one unit of affordable housing. We've been very active with our COA trust funds and trying to allocate them towards affordable housing. So we are in a pretty good position, I think, if we were to be challenged, but that's never, you know, you cannot predict what a court will do. So I, I think the message is that while COA, you could proceed, you know, you could proceed, you know, step by step and not worry about a lawsuit, now if there is a lawsuit, we're going to have to be ready to defend it and show what we've done. So we've taken some steps, you know, we're looking at the housing plan, looking to see how we're going to define our obligation using all the rules and the past COA rules and try to come up with a plan which we think best, puts the town in the best position should there be litigation coming off of COA. Now again, coming off this, this Supreme Court case that, you know, takes COA out of the mix at least for now. There, there could be, I should mention, you know, the Supreme Court always says there could be a legislative fix to this and the rules could change all again. But until that happens, we have to be prepared in the event of a lawsuit. So again, I've done a number of things. The affordable housing requirement for new, new builders, one. Allocating trust funds where we think we have a need is another. Madison, you know, I have the view, I've had the pleasure of working with the boroughs in the last three years. I think you're well ahead of a lot of other towns that we've dealt with in terms of where you are. I mean, one evidence of that, I mean, you have very active housing authority and, and I think it probably at this point, good for Lou to talk more in the trenches. I mean, I have the view from 30,000 feet from the legal perspective, but where your numbers are and what might be happening, Lou could probably give a better perspective. Again, I think the message is, you know, it's all uncertain. The best we can do is do the best we can to try to create affordable housing and where the opportunities present themselves. And again, I think we've done a good job in the past and I think we ought to just turn it over to Lou unless there's questions.
Any questions intended for? But as you know, the, the administration in Trenton tried to recapture all of the old trust funds. The Supreme Court has said no. Those trust funds have to stay with municipalities. What we have done, being the, the second best municipality in Morris County, actually best, the second oldest municipality in terms of developing affordable housing. Morristown developed their affordable housing first and we were second. You can see what other municipalities in our area have done? Nothing. Madison has 166 affordable housing apartments for senior citizens, for families, ranging from single-family homes to large Chateau Théory. In the future, we plan on doing whatever we need to do to continue. We have some money, it's not a lot of money, in the housing trust fund. There will be more money coming in the future, but as I've always said, there's never enough money. If the Fair Share Housing Center is able to convince the courts that their numbers are accurate, our defense is going to be, look what we've done, look at the size of Madison, you know, look at how much land we have available. And I'm, I'm very confident that a reasonable court, and I, I use that term tongue-in-cheek, would look at us and say, yes, you're right. Your number of 430-some-odd units is ridiculous. But there will be some number. Hopefully, it's as low as that 88, because I think that's a manageable number. There are other aspects of this whole Council on Affordable, of the affordable housing issue, which terms, in terms of rehabilitation, and we have far exceeded our requirement for rehabilitation and we will continue to do so in the future through the funds that we've received in the past and the funds when we convert to this RAD program, we'll be receiving a couple of million dollars. So we'll more than meet that rehab need. But in the future, we'll have to just keep our eyes and ears open and see what happens. I agree with Mr. Bruno that we have to wait and see what's going to come down the pike and plan accordingly.
Questions for Lou? Pat?
One question, or maybe it's in multiple parts. When we have built new affordable housing, for instance, Chateau Théory, how oversubscribed were we when we advertised that we had X number of units available?
Currently, currently for the senior building, we're about on 18-month waiting list.
18 months, which is how many people?
For the family units, it's about seven or eight years.
No, you said 18 months, but how many people are on the waiting list?
Uh, probably about 300.
That many, okay.
Yeah. Now, they're not all Madison residents. If you remember, residents got a first preference. So Madison residents, they're probably about 90.
And a lot of that is because there is no other affordable housing in the surrounding communities. We're the only game in town.
Correct, correct. There's the, two high-rises in Morristown and Early Street. And there are a couple of low-rises that Morris County Housing Authority has in Randolph and Rockaway, but there's nothing close by.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out how they came up with 400 because you start to do the math and that's a lot of units statewide.
Yeah.
And especially if you consider that that's our additional obligation with other towns not having even met their initial, because we're on, what, round three now?
Yes.
Effectively?
Round three. And, and you can see what your surrounding neighboring communities have done.
Same thing.
So we are, we are, you know, well ahead of those communities, so I'm hopeful that a reasonable court will take that into consideration.
There you go. Bob?
You, you mentioned something before, rehabilitation. Now, there isn't much land left in Madison to build on. And if the court said you need more, what do you do? Would that include rehabbing some other homes and maybe converting them into multiple family? I mean, how would the town, kidding aside, how would the town address it?
Right. It becomes a very difficult position. A private developer is not going to come in and buy five or six homes, demolish them and, and be allowed to build a high-rise building. We have looked, Mr. Cody and I have discussed this on numerous occasions, looked at several multifamilies in town that are dilapidated and might be available for sale. And we would purchase those from the private sector and then convert them into affordable housing. And, you know, two families, three families, whatever we can find. We're looking at those, we've always looked at those, we're looking at them even more now because the prices are still a little bit depressed. Not much. Madison did not take a major hit during this crisis, but we're, that's one of the areas we could pick up a few units. We'll never, never, ever be able to reach a 400.
No, I, I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you.
All for coming. Item two, ordinance prohibiting unregulated pipelines in all zoning districts. Ostry?
Right. I'm sorry, I pulled the horse. Yes, this is in reaction to what is being proposed through the state of New York and New Jersey, and it would protect our residents. We had a late-day memo from Mr. Jacoby on this subject of the, an unregulated pipeline and prohibiting in our zone, our town. And it says it will give the residents a measure of safety. So I think from that standpoint, it doesn't hurt to, to support it and have it on our books. Maybe Matt, you'd want to talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, the, the resolute, twofold. Right now, as you know, the legislature has put forth some bills dealing with a private for-profit entity's ability to acquire land through eminent domain and is trying to preclude that. One of the issues is eminent domain is the power of an entity, usually government, come in and they seize land for a public purpose. So an area that people are most common, can, can equate to is a power company. A power company wants to come in and run high-tension wires through a neighborhood, they can exercise eminent domain and take it. Water utilities, there, for example, you have United Water. United Water runs pipes through neighborhoods. It's a private entity, but there's a public good associated with running water to provide water, sanitary sewer, et cetera. The issue here is this is a private for-profit company and the legislature is looking to amend their ability to effectuate eminent domain. If that passes, we'll wait and see. What we're doing here, the proposed amendment, is a proposal to your zoning ordinance which would prohibit the ability to put in a pipeline in the Borough of Madison. What does this have? It really has a twofold impact. If the legislature doesn't take any action or doesn't pass, what does this, this change mean for the Borough of Madison? Well, it means that if ultimately this pipeline comes in, they might look to jurisdictions that don't have zoning ordinances in place like this to make it, this is going to be one more burden for them to jump through, a hoop to jump through. The second thing is that one, one aspect of eminent domain is what is the value of your property? And if there's this additional hoop to jump through, it could increase the value of those residents of Madison's property should this power company or this pipeline company exercise its rights of eminent domain. So I think that you're not in, you're not adversely affecting the residents. Might you get into a legal battle? You might. But guess what? That's what the courts are for. These are not expensive legal battles, they're prerogative red actions. So I think what you're doing here is you're putting a path of resistance up, you're letting the pipeline know that you're going to fight for the residents. And worst-case scenario, if they ultimately exercise eminent domain and you have residents who could adversely be affected, what you're doing here is increasing the likelihood that the value that they're going to have to pay for that property is increased. So it's my recommendation that you do this. Your neighboring jurisdiction has passed this, so I think it makes sense that, that, and one of the proposals is somewhere around the 24-quarter. So I think this is probably a smart thing to, to implement. And if the legislature does pass the, the pending legislation, which would prohibit them from exercising eminent domain, then this would really have some teeth.
Hey, Bob, and then Pat?
Yeah, when I read your letter today, it did say that, and I think you explained it very well. Even if we pass this resolution, it doesn't necessarily prohibit it, but it will certainly help us. It doesn't hurt us to do this, but it helps put, like you said, a, a barrier in the way, increases property value, whatever it may be, maybe goes someplace else. Is that correct?
It won't hurt your residents.
Right.
You know, it might mean that I have to go to court, but I think that on balance, and you have, this is a bipartisan effort in the legislature.
Right.
And so if this bipartisan effort in the legislature gets legs and is passed and is signed into law, that could be, you know, very, very telling. And what, basically what the legislature is doing is they're saying if it's a private entity that's not regulated by the Board of Public Utilities.
Right.
And it's for, it's not for a greater public good, it's for their own private profit, which is a fine, you can have a pro, for-profit company, you don't have the right of eminent domain. Because the whole purpose of eminent domain is taken by the king. It's really for the benefit of the greater good. And so the purpose of the legislation is, it's not really for the person's greater good, it, it's for the benefit of this private entity.
Right. Right.
Pat? And then Rob?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I had asked for this opinion, because I had some questions about it. The first question is, when you say it's unregulated, there's no one who regulates private pipelines in this country?
Well, there are federal regulations that deal with certain aspects of it, and you also have the DEP. If you remember, we did pass a resolution asking the DEP to study it and monitor and make sure it's not going to have an adverse impact. So there are different entities, both at the state and federal level. And I'm not an expert on the federal level, there is the FERC, which does have some oversight in it, and they work with the state entity. The issue here is pipelines, you know, there are pipelines that have been put in, but the issue is whether or not they have the right of eminent domain. And eminent domain is they just take your property. They come in, they take your property, and then you fight over the value. So what we're trying to do here, and if you remember, there was, there was a very famous court case that took place in New Jersey where a municipality out to shore was exercising eminent domain, blighted areas to rehab. They rehabbed the thing, and then the court ultimately said, you didn't have the right to have eminent domain, and that's now been taken away. So what we're talking about is really, what is their power of eminent domain? Right now, as the law stands, they do have that power.
So I guess my first question is, if there is some body that regulates them in some way, shape, or form, are we properly identifying them as an unregulated pipeline in this ordinance?
There are in the state of New Jersey, they're unregulated.
That's how they're classified, okay, so we're not, we're not creating a regulation that would not apply. The second question is, in terms of eminent domain, you said that this would increase the value if they were taking it through eminent domain, because the state took no action and no court decided, or the courts decided that they were allowed to. Can you explain that again? I'm not quite sure why having a zoning ordinance?
When there's a taking, and I'm not an expert on eminent domain by any stretch, but my partner does quite a bit of it. And what there is, is there's, you do a declaration of taking, which is, we're taking your property. Once you file the declaration of taking, it's no longer your property, Mr. Rowe, it's now the government or this private entity's property. So then you get into a value, a fight over the value of that property. And what some of the courts have said is, when there are zoning ordinances that have prohibited it, where you would have had to have gone in and get a variance, it can increase the value of the property by which the group, and there's a, in eminent domain proceedings, there's a panel of three people that make the determination of the value. This is something that they can look at and say, the town prohibited this use, this is a prohibitive use, that's going to increase the value, so, you know, instead of it being a hundred dollars per square foot, it's now two hundred dollars per square foot. And that can go into the calculus.
So they're simultaneously going to say, you can keep the property, it's worth more than you originally asked because of this particular ordinance, but on the other hand, the ordinance that prohibits the use of the property for an unregulated pipeline does not apply, and you can go ahead and build the pipeline?
No, no, what would happen is that if a court said, your ordinance does not prohibit them from doing an eminent domain taking, they can do the taking, it might still protect your resident or your landholder from saying, nevertheless, we have this ordinance, you've got to give us the value of what it would be if you had, you've gone through the application. So it's just an added step. The other thing, too frankly, is there are certain towns, you just heard on COA, you're going to have different developers look at towns and say, okay, wait a second, what town wasn't first-round compliant, wasn't second-round compliant, and that's the ones they're going to target. So very often, when you have a company that's looking to put in something, they're going to follow the path of least resistance. And if it means that they're going to be fighting you, going to court, tied up in the appellate vision, et cetera, they very often can say, you know what? We're going to take a different route. And if you look, there's a gazillion routes that this alleged pipelines allegedly has come through my yard.
Yeah, I mean, that's amazing, Cor.
A little used to here.
But the bottom line is, there's no way they're going to build a pipeline all the way through New Jersey strictly by, through eminent domain. They're going to have to use existing right-of-ways, because otherwise, the cost of the land acquisition would be prohibitive, I'm assuming.
And that's, but there's also, if you notice, PSEG is opposing it, they don't want it running on their, on their property, so.
Oh, they're saying that for now.
One of the biggest holders of right-of-ways is PSEG in the state of New Jersey. So, you know, I think that it's, there's a lot of unknowns here, Pat, but I don't think you're going to go wrong by passing this. And again, this goes, right now, what happens is it goes over to your planning board, there's a review period, they comment on it, your planning board attorney will provide comments, it'll come back to you.
I expressed to you, the biggest concern I have is that we don't get ourselves into a situation where we pass an ordinance that we're going to have to spend a lot of time and money defending at some point, and we're going to lose. Because I lived through, when I moved to this town, the whole sunrise issue, and it's up on Danforth Road, and the town, I don't know if they rezone, I don't remember the specific circumstances, but I know the town spent a lot of time and energy trying to stop it.
Yeah, that's a little bit, that's a little bit different. I think here, what you're going to have is, if there is a challenge to it, put it this way, there's so many more hurdles for this company to get through right now, that I'm not thinking that this is their big hurdle.
That's what I'm saying.
But if there's a challenge, you know, we're going to have our neighboring town and us, we'll join in together, and we'll stand up for the residents to make sure, because the one thing, you know, when you're, when you're driving, I just took a drive through New York State and Pennsylvania, taking my son looking at colleges, but there's lots of open space, and you see pipelines, and you see them, you see high-tension power wires, there's no residents. What you have right here is, you have literally thousands of people living right on this twenty-four quarter. Something goes wrong, it adversely affects not only your drinking water, it could affect people's lives. And so I think that that's something that, you know, an ordinance like this is telling them, listen, you want to do it, it's all nibby, not in my backyard. There's other places to put it, and it's frankly, it's what Jersey City and a lot of those towns did a few years ago, opposing a pipeline coming through Jersey City, Bay Island, et cetera. These are things that are concerns to high densities, and New Jersey unfortunately, or fortunately, is a very high-density state. Depends how you look at it.
Okay, Rob, and then over to Ben.
So eminent domain argument is one thing, and then restricting interstate commerce is another. How is this zoning ordinance not going to violate the federal Commerce Clause? I mean, you know, I mean, I don't see how this zoning ordinance is defensible whatsoever if the people that want to build it are really serious.
But you know what? There's this courthouse down in Morristown, or there's a courthouse in Newark, we can go in and.
It'll be federal court, yeah, so.
That's fine.
So it'll cost us money.
Rob, it's sometimes.
Is it in the interest of the borough of Madison to pass ordinances that we know will lose?
I don't think, I don't know if this will lose, and I think that a lot of this is going to be dependent upon what the state legislature does in terms of.
I totally agree with that, so why don't we let the state legislature fight it out? And why don't we petition our federal representatives to push for stronger regulation of pipelines?
And I think, but I think the one thing I can tell you is, I think if you take a stand like this, you're taking a stand on behalf of your residents and saying, listen, we're willing to take that risk. Because right now, the state legislature, they've put legislation forward, but they haven't acted on it yet, your federal representatives haven't put anything forward or acted on it yet. So you know what we're doing at the local level? As Tipodion once said, all politics is local. We're starting out local, and hopefully, it's pushing it forward where it'll get the attention of your state legislatures and get the attention of your federal representatives. That maybe that they will act upon it, because the reality is, do we all use oil? We do, well, most of us drove here tonight, so we're all guilty of using fossil fuels. The issue is, is that does it make sense to run a pipeline through a high-density, highly populated area over to the refinery? And there's pluses and minuses. What we're doing here is trying to prevent it from running through the borough of Madison.
I understand the underlying desire.
Right.
But at the same time, you know, I don't see how this doesn't run afoul of the Constitution. And should we be passing ordinances that directly contradict the Constitution?
I think that it does not directly contradict the Constitution, because, Rob, what it's talking about, or councilman, I apologize, what it's talking about.
You can call me Rob, I don't care. Rob is fine.
What it's talking about, too, is we're in a, an area where most utilities are governed by the Board of Public Utilities. So you have a body, a legislative body, or executive branch body, that oversees and regulates that utility. So for example, when JC and P and L just wanted to raise their rates, they had to make a rate application to the Board of Public Utilities, the Board of Public Utilities said, no, we're not letting you raise your rates, in fact, we're lowering your rates. There's a body that, within our state, that, and one of the things is that although there is a federal government, we still have state governments that have powers, and.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do, the federal government has the right to regulate interstate commerce, and since this is coming from New York, it's interstate. So what's the difference between us passing this zoning law and us passing a zoning law that says it is illegal for tanker trucks with nonregulated material to drive through Madison?
Well, you do have certain areas where it would be illegal, and certain roads where they can't handle the weight restrictions.
That's okay, but that's a physical, right?
And what this is saying is, it's an unregulated, and it's tied into the eminent domain, so.
Do we mention eminent domain in the ordinance? I didn't see it. Maybe I didn't read it carefully enough.
No, it's not mentioned, it's mentioned because of the state legislation. If you look at the state legislation that we cited, that's specifically where the eminent domain is derived from. So, you know, can I predict that there won't be a legal challenge? No, I can't predict that. Do I, can I predict what a court will do? There are many courts that weigh, because the bottom line is, when you're looking at the Commerce Clause and interstate commerce, we can't adversely affect it, but there's a lot of other venues by which they can exercise their rights of, we're not blocking it, it's not the state of New Jersey blocking it, it's the borough of Madison. So we're saying, take it someplace else.
That's a slippery slope, you know, come on, it's, you know, so theoretically, that if all five hundred and sixty-five municipalities pass these things, we would effectively say, well, it's not state of New Jersey, it's each individual municipality, and we would be restricting interstate commerce.
I think that what we have to do is, we have to, at times, take a stand and let the, because what this is doing is sending a message to our legislatures, state legislatures, is that we expect you to take action. Clearly, they have more power than we do. They have the power to say that you, as an entity, don't have the right to exercise eminent domain. If you want to do it, buy it. Buy it, negotiate it, and do it. And you know what? That's a very different undertaking. The power of eminent domain is, they run it down wherever they want to run it, and they pay for the value of the property. So I think, you know, my feeling is, I don't think you go wrong with this, is, could there be a legal fight? There could. And if there is a legal fight, we'll deal with it. But we're not going to be the only ones in the legal fight. Your neighboring town is going to be in the same legal fight with us.
Yeah, so, yeah, I was going to say, if there is a legal fight, we wouldn't be alone, and at that point, we have a decision to say, well, we don't want to pursue or do.
And I have a funny feeling, your legislators, your representatives, if we get into that type of legal fight, it's one of those fights where it's maybe a David versus Clyde, it's not the worst thing in the world to be involved in.
Ben, and then Bob?
Yeah, I have two questions, and I think I'm getting at sort of the same issue. One is, how wide a net do we cast with this? I realize we're, we have a particular pipeline that we're concerned about, but how many unregulated pipelines are there in this state? I mean, there are a huge number of pipelines going through New Jersey. Do we have any idea?
Well, no, but see, a lot of them, a lot of them are regulated, so.
That's what I'm asking.
The vast majority of them are regulated by the Board of Public Utilities. This is a unique situation where it's a private pipeline for a private purpose. PSEG, you know, you have pipelines, water pipelines, you have sewer pipelines, you have the joint meeting of Madison and Chatham has pipelines. But when you're dealing with PSEG, JCPL, et cetera, those pipelines are regulated by BPU. This is not. This kind of falls in a somewhat unique circumstance.
And then, I'm also interested as to what other communities are doing. I know we've had resolutions or ordinances from other towns that have said they're against this pipeline, but I wasn't aware that they were as precise as we are in this.
I think, I think.
Chatham Township.
Chatham Township.
And I think the borough is considering.
Yeah, Chatham Township passed one very similar to this.
Anyone else?
Not that I'm aware of, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
But I have a funny feeling that you're going to see more of them passing it. You know, it's the type of thing where you're making people aware of an issue. Sometimes, you know.
No, listen, I personally, I'm sympathetic to blocking this, but on the other hand, I don't want to be leading the legal charge if it gets to that.
Right.
My concern.
We have Bob, and then back to Rob.
Yeah, I guess there's four words I don't like here, private company and eminent domain. You know, because a private company is by default for profit, and, you know, they're going to want to do what's easiest and cheapest for them to get done.
There's, just, you know, there are private companies, like, for example, United Water is a private company that provides lots of water to northern New Jersey. They have the right of eminent domain, but there's a public purpose in it, is that they're providing potable water to communities for safety reasons. Here, this is a pipeline that's running from Albany down to Linden to transport crude oil, which there are some safety factors. People say that's safer than the trains or the trucks, and I'm not an expert on this, but it's a private entity that's profiting from this transmission.
And I guess the point I'm getting at is, and this kind of piggybacks a bit on what Rob was saying, is, you know, this whole interstate, this isn't really blocking it. What we're telling them is, look, guy, you're a private company, you're for profit, if you want to come through Madison, you're going to have to negotiate with every one of these town homeowners and buy their property. So there may be a cheaper, more efficient way, or maybe you don't come through here at all.
Well, it's also a prohibited use, so if it's a prohibited use, then you have to make an application to the zoning Board of Adjustment, because it's a prohibited use. I mean, for example, there are prohibited uses, you can't build a shed in your front yard, that's prohibited. Can you make an application to the zoning Board of Adjustment? You can. It slows down the process. It doesn't mean that it's an absolute bar, we don't have the power to absolutely bar things.
Well, that was my point.
It makes the entity go through various hurdles to.
That was my point, we're not actually blocking, we're making it much more difficult.
Okay, Rob?
Again, I understand fully, okay? I disagree with Bob in that, you know, I've done quite a bit of reading on this in the past week, and, you know, I believe that it is blocking it. Like, for example, New Jersey can't pass a law that says, no more diesel trucks on the turnpike, they have to be electric. Right? So we're not blocking trucks from driving on the turnpike, we're saying, they have to be powered by electricity as opposed to diesel. Other, you know, companies in other states would sue New Jersey and say, you're causing me, you know, because, and we, and New Jersey would lose. So we, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States when I, to this office. I can't, I cannot knowingly vote for something that I believe violates the Constitution because of my oath that I took. Since you stated that you're not necessarily an expert in eminent domain, does it make sense for us to hire outside counsel to get their opinion on it prior to voting on this?
Well, I think that what you're doing, this is a first reading. At this point, it goes over to your Planning Board of Adjustment for review and comment. You do have a Planning Board Attorney who clearly is familiar with it, and they have the ability to do it, and during that period, there's a review period, we can, we can look at the eminent domain aspect of it.
Or the interstate commerce. Look, I don't like the idea of a private company being able to come in and say, hey, I like two seventy-two Woodland Road, I'm paying you money. That, I hate that, too. However, it's the whole, you know, so I would much rather fight it on eminent domain, that power as opposed to the interstate commerce.
I have no problem, because, right, this is a first reading, so we do a first reading, we have more than enough time before you guys could effectuate anything on it, because you have the review period by the planning board. And if it comes back and they want to make a change to it, we're going to have to reintroduce it, and we can look at the Commerce Clause, but I don't think that it's going to be something where we're prohibiting and there's no recourse by which the company could come in. They could make an application, and ultimately, they could make an application to the zoning Board, or frankly, what they'll do is they'll go into court, they'll file an action and say, we think that this violates it.
I agree.
I don't think, I think upholding the Constitution is not knowingly violating a law. And I think that the one thing that we're dealing with right now is, we're balancing the rights of your citizens versus a private company.
Yeah.
And are the rights of your citizens, because we're also bound to uphold the laws and protect them, and one of the issues that you're trying to protect is the rights of the citizens to be safe and secure in their homes and not have their property values adversely affected. So what we're trying to do here is, what's the greater good here? The greater good, I think, in the, in this collective wisdom, is the rights of your citizens and the rights of Madisonians to make sure that we're protecting their property, their values, and we're not allowing a private company to exercise the powers of the king, i.e. eminent domain.
And that's what this ordinance, that's what this ordinance accomplishes.
It's an attempt to accomplish that, yes, along with the state legislature that has It's an attempt to accomplish that, yes, along with the state legislature that has proposed legislation to stop that.
Thank you.
And there's a comments or questions? This is Ordinance 28, which is listed for introduction. And then item three is amend sidewalk replacement permit fees. Ordinance 31.
Bob Vogel wants to know.
Bob Vogel.
Hey, this one's simple, I think. Um, so, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about increasing the, uh, the, um, rate of reimbursement for sidewalk replacement for private property owners from $15 to $25 per square yard. Uh, that ordinance is on for adoption later on, uh, second reading, uh, later on this evening. Uh, during that last meeting, we also had a discussion about whether there was, uh, some type of incentive that could be proposed through the permit process, uh, for individual residents that qualified for the sidewalk reimbursement program. And this particular ordinance, uh, proposal is a modification of the permit process, which takes the normal $100 permit application fee, drops it to $50, and also gives the borough engineer the flexibility to drop the, uh, the guarantee or any bonding necessary, uh, for inspection purposes, any damages to municipal property. Uh, the vast majority of these sidewalk replacement projects don't damage adjoining property, and so I think would qualify for, uh, uh, omission of the guarantee amount at the same time there. So, um, very simple, uh, wording change to the ordinance, uh, and, uh, follows our discussion at the last meeting.
Pat, I guess I'll comment, because I always want to ask Bob to research this and come back with it. So, number one, I want to thank you for putting this all together. I think it is in our best interest as a community to incent people as much as possible to keep their sidewalks in good repair. So to the extent that we can help them with some of the cost, we can keep the, the, the expense of permitting it, and also not have to post too large a bond, uh, if in the opinion of the engineer, no, no other property or, none of our property is in danger. So I think this will be helpful, uh, and hopefully down the road, it'll minimize the amount of sidewalks that we need to replace ourselves, which we typically end up doing when we do some of the reconstruction projects.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, this is Ordinance, uh, 31, it's listed for introduction. Now we're on to ordinances for hearing. Borough Clerk, please read the statement.
The Ordinance 12, 2015, uh, scheduled for hearing, was introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March the 9th, 2015. All the other ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on Monday, March 23rd. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 12, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 15 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Downtown Development Commission.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 12. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 12 dash 2015.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 12, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 13, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $10,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for Professional Services for the restoration and renovation of the east wing of the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 13, 2015. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 13 dash 2015.
I'll second.
Council discussion?
Hmm.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 13, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk pub, publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 14, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $75,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund to resurface and repair the skating rink and playing fields at Memorial Park.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 14. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 14 dash 2015.
I'll second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 14, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 15, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, replacing Ordinance 1, uh, 2014 pertaining to part-time, non-union salaries and offices.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on Ordinance 15? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 15 dash 2015.
I second it.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 15, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 16, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 166 of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks to amend the sidewalk reimbursement program.
I open the hearing. Anyone, anyone wishing to comment on Ordinance 16? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 16 dash 2015.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 16, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 17, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $150,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Sewer Lining Improvements.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 27, uh, on Ordinance 17, 2015. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Please step forward.
No.
No, sorry. Uh, seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 17 dash 2015.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 17, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 18 dash 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $663,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the milling and overlay of various streets.
I open the hearing on Ordinance 18. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 18 dash 2015.
I second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 18, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And we are now on number two invitation of discussion. This is when anyone in the public can step forward and comment on anything. Please state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And, um, actually, before I have the clerk read the statement on introduction ordinances, what I would like to do, um, is we have a quite a bit of the ordinances being introduced are related to capital expenditures that are, were in the budget. Uh, we still will have discussion. I will do a quick description of them. We, we need to read by title anyway, um, as we vote, but we will combine the discussion for ordinances 19 through 27 and ordinance 29 and 30 all at once. So we won't, we will not have separate discussions. Is that, uh, okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay. So you can go ahead and read the, uh, statement of introduction.
Okay. Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for April the 27th, 2015. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
All right. Before I call up the, for first reading, we'll just, the discussions we'll have right now, if our RNE is $11,000 for turnout gear, $10,000 for thermal imaging, $180,000 for road department, um, purchase of a truck, $120,000 for purchase of two, two trucks with accessories, $85,000 for skid steer, uh, $60,000 for, uh, capital improvements and, uh, pump in the sewer department, $32,000 for a hot box for the road department, $10,000 for crimping machine and mechanical services department, $10,000 for water capital improvement for well upgrades, and $40,000 for, from Lecter Capital for pickup truck-related, uh, equipment, and $120,000 for construction of pole barn and additional related items. So, um, anyone, any discussion on any of those capital items?
Can you just move them first, or?
We're, we're, we're just, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna call them up by title and then, then vote, but, uh, we're gonna have the discussion ahead, ahead of time.
Now, will, will we move and second each individual?
Yes, we need to do that. Okay. No discussion, so I will ask the clerk to read ordinances for, for first reading and, um, read ordinance by title.
Ordinance 19, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $11,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of four sets of firefighter turnout gear.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 19 dash 20, 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance-
Ordinance 20, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $10,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 20 dash 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 21, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $180,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a truck with accessories for the road department.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 21 dash 2015.
I second the motion.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, 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 Mr. Landrigan?
He didn't say anything?
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I said yes.
We're all gonna say we're on. Sorry, I got everybody sick.
Did you say yes?
Huh?
Now-
What were you up to? I couldn't-
Okay. Now, Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 22, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $120,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of two trucks with accessories.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 22 dash 2015.
I second. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
We have Ordinance 23, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $85,000 from the general, uh, from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a skid gear with attachments for the water department.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 23 dash 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 24, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $60,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new pump in the sewer department.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 24 dash 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 25, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $32,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a hot box for the road department.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 25 dash 2015.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 26, 2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $10,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a crimping machine for the mech, mechanical services department.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 26 dash 2015.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 27, 2015, is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison, appropriating $10,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for well upgrades.[1435.04] from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for well upgrades.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 27-2015.
Second?
Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 28, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195-5, entitled Prohibited Uses of the Land Development Ordinance of the Borough of Madison prohibiting unregulated pipelines in any zoning district.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 28-2015.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item?
Pat? I'm just gonna say I'm gonna vote for the introduction. I still have serious reservations. I'll have continued discussions with Mr. Giacobi about them before the final hearing. Astrid?
Yeah, and we'll also be getting planning board input.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. How does that work into this? Planning board input?
So it goes to the planning board?
Correct.
Next week?